Okay.
Aye.
Yeah, gentlemen, we, eh, how come it, and members of the public, uh, sorry. We can't see it. Have a lot of comedian meeting. Nina, you want to, uh, do you need to tell me again?
We have two people on the table. Oh, I'm sorry, we have a gift donation.
Oh, really? Exposed. I appreciate the donation.
Yeah, we were actually in the seat of a grant from the New Hampshire charitable foundation for the amount of five hundred dollars. This is the direct response to President Nina and the athletic departments work with, uh, New Hampshire tackle center, which is a initiative that takes place every fall in New Hampshire where student athletes, uh, raise money, uh, to get sales through the gates, all pools in, and they go shopping for groceries that are then donated to the local community. So in response to our annual work for that, the charitable foundation gives us five hundred dollars. We're on the part.
What's your form? Move to the side.
Thank you.
You want a question for all?
Congratulations.
All the favor.
Aye.
Jeff, oh. Who did Fred find that in time?
He, there's no application necessary, it's, uh, by virtue of our participation in the program and President's done it the last three years.
Excellent.
And we really admire President.
Sense, gentlemen, do anything.
Okay. Um, one of them, Josh was here, he can speak to this better than I can if he'd like more detail, but we need to trench a sewer pipe, so, what is it? Um, so he's asking to transfer some funds from one of his companies to cover that, the amount is two thousand seven eighty and fifty, that's, that's not the whole amount, but like quite easy to transfer.
So, we're the motion. Motion to approve. That's fine.
Sorry.
What happened to you, I?
So it's about sixty feet of sewer pipe, uh, we're having troubles with backup in the area, um, there's significant stuff going down the line which doesn't help it, which we hope to, uh, resolve that part of the issue, um, but the pipe is old and instead of digging the pipe up, the sixty feet with the tar and everything associated with that cost, we're looking to clean the pipe, run some new epoxy in there which would be equivalent to brand new piece of pipe, to solve any issues moving forward.
Oh, one pipe missing out still?
No, no, we have a couple different shoots out.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, roughly, I mean, the dishes were eighty-five.
It's not that old.
Lower ones could be older, and this is in the lower area.
PVC pipe?
No, yeah, sorry.
So you make the little PVC layers inside the end?
Yeah, it has a lot of, yeah, so we could do two things, we could clean it, send the equipment down there, shine the pipe up, um, which is equivalent of the re-pipe, but when you shine a pipe, uh, undercarriage of the pipe underneath the ground, start putting water through it, it's just gonna deteriorate throughout time. Um, we'll do that part of the process, and we'll throw epoxy which will coat the inner, inner lining of that pipe, which will make it a straight shot to the, to the main line, to like that.
There's thought at some point about lining the second pipe as well?
Not until, not until there's an issue. But yeah, it can show to be an issue, this, this one has shown to be an issue this year.
What's the name of the trust fund? Their names are missing.
Um, it's not, it's just in the budget transferring between two lines.
Okay.
The one doesn't have, yeah.
You got a question for them? Jeff? All the favor of the transfer?
Aye.
One more for us?
Yes, we do, for the fact, um, from Academy for, um, conditional approval of a field trip, uh, from Amy Parkinson for being from Italy. I think this is preliminary, right, so we started, yeah, starting to have to start investigating.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Say. Twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
Question. Question.
Do you know, just like, uh, provisional approval?
We've, um, in the past, we've had something with people going pretty far down the road of looking into field trips and actually putting deposits down, and then it comes to the board after the fact, so we started doing some conditional approval where you're just giving your consent for, that in theory, the sound of the trip that, you know, allowing all the details of taking care of, it's okay, start investigating and getting some progress.
So this is for next year, for three years, I believe.
Year plus, yeah.
And what, is there an age limit, minimum?
Three, nine, twelve.
Nine, twelve, so it'll be, and that's an eight issues, they grew up to issues.
Okay. So we, um, follow the students, follow their, you know, the, 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 correct.
And adult families would travel, but you could say, um, that personally.
Other question? All the favor? I'm gonna take one of these out of order so we can get some of these folks out of here, um, not, not that you, so, you're welcome to stay the rest of the night, but, um, chairs aren't all that comfortable. So Grange building folks, I know a couple of folks, can you folks hear from you, Grange, would like to speak to the Grange building. Garvin.
Yeah, approach the chair, uh, we're both, I don't, three of us have a little bit of difficulty with the acoustics in this room, so I handle both.
Difficulty.
Hearing what you were saying, and you are much too proud of, I'm Jim Garvin, I spoke at the public hearing the other day and, and spoke about Warren article, I guess it's eleven, that, that you have for the sale of the so-called Grange building. Um, I sent, I tried to send to you, um, a number of pieces of background that were circulated around the town, but somewhat inconsistently. Like to mention Jim Bachelor is here, who's the, uh, master of the Grange, and Patty Fowler, who's a member of the Grange, they're interested in, of course, this long-term tenancy of that building. Um, the thing that I wanted, or something I wanted to mention to you is that I think there's been some, um, misunderstanding or confusion about the fact that the building is, or is not, a historic building. Back in two thousand and nine, when I was working for the state preservation office, I was asked by Marilyn Ross and the late Hallie Robbins, both of whom went on to school in that building, um, to see about getting a building designated as a historic structure, and the state preservation office has that as, as one of their duties, statewide survey of historic structures. So the paperwork that I, I tried to email to all of you, was written by me back in two thousand and nine. At that time, the regular committee, the determination of eligibility committee of the division of historical resources, evaluated that documentation, found the building to be eligible for the New Hampshire State Register of Historic Places and for the National Register of Historic Places. That is, that determination of eligibility designates the building as a historic building. That doesn't mean it's listed in the state register, it doesn't mean that it is listed in the national register, although I also prepare a national registry examination. Now, the, we at that time, two thousand and nine, approached the school board and asked them to sign a form that wished to do so to actually have the building listed in the state register, and that was never acted upon, there was a lot of correspondence back and forth, so it never happened. But the fact that, that that was, that that form was never filled out does not mean that the building is not a historic building, it is a historic building. And by being determined eligible for the state and national registers of historic places, the building is also eligible for various grants, including the land and community heritage investment program, which makes grants for historic buildings and for conservation, and also for money under the state conservation license grant, which is the, the so-called moose plate grant, some of you have moose plates under your car, I'm sure. And that funds both conservation work in publicly owned, um, properties, and preservation work for historic buildings that are publicly owned. So here we have a publicly owned building that is eligible for at least two of these grants. That confirmed as of today with the state preservation office that the school building would be, is considered to be eligible because it, it is, um, owned by the school board, which is a, a portion of Pembroke town government. So the, the building actually has some resources behind it that come from that designation, so the, the determination of eligibility which may be a concern to some of you, that's wishing that it were a historic building and you didn't have to worry about it as historic building, that's also an asset, that also does provide potential funding. As long as the building remains a public building, if it's owned by a non-public entity, a private individual, or a nonprofit corporation, it would not be eligible for conservation license plate funding. The building is important, it was built in eighteen fifty-one, it was built as part of a great reform effort that was being carried out in New Hampshire by the commissioner of public schools at that time, which was a new office and a then created to try to improve public schooling in New Hampshire. And the commissioner, the common schools, put forth some model, um, schoolhouse designs, because schoolhouses in eighteen thirties, forties, up through the time that this was built, were generally very disruptive, they were not, they, they were not at all like, like Pembroke Academy or any of the other elementary schools that you're familiar with. So the reform effort was really to try to encourage local school districts, and all, all these schools were built by local neighborhood districts, they weren't, there was no such thing as a, as a townwide school board until eighteen eighty-five, this was all done by the neighbors. And, and the encouragement was to build good buildings, the best you could build for your children, and this is a good example of one of them, this building was built with brick, which is unusual, most were built of wood, this building, uh, was built with granite trim, probably from the Bailey Granite quarry over in Allenstown, it was built with the best local materials, and it was considered to be a model schoolhouse. So it actually is a kind of a monument in the educational history of New Hampshire, and certainly of Pembroke. It, this was the great, this was district number one, the, the Pembroke Street District, the eminent district in town, and this was a model schoolhouse for the public to see, this was also part of the Chester Turnpike, this was a turnpike toll road back at that time, so everybody was going from the south of New Hampshire to Concord, went by this building, and presumably admired it for its quality and the commitment of, of that district number one to, to build a fine building. So the building has evolved upon the, the school district after eighteen eighty-five, after the town, as a whole, became a school district under the laws of that period, and that's how it came to you. And, and the school board, of course, has had, uh, the good custodian of that building in Pembroke Grange, which for more than fifty years has maintained the building, under a very generous lease on the part of the school board to the Grange, but in return, the Grange has acted generously toward the building and has maintained it. Now, I understand that, I know, from, uh, both looking through the window and hearing from many people, that a portion of the ceiling in that building has fallen, and I will tell you, I live in a house of eighteen thirty up in North Pembroke, and two places in our house, the ceiling has fallen. The type of lab and plaster that they used at that time was not the best compared to what we have at, since that time. But when a portion of a plaster ceiling of an eighteen fifty-one schoolhouse falls, that's not the end of the world, that's a small thing, but it's a big thing to you folk, you've got a lot bigger things to think about, you don't wanna have to worry about repairs to a building that you weren't even sure you owned, I understand that, but that's why I mentioned the grant possibilities. As long as that building maintains a town or school district property, it would be eligible for up to ten thousand dollars of money, that does not need to be matched by any other money, it would be an outright gift. And I'm on a committee over in Allenstown, here with the old Allenstown meeting house, and we've got several of these conservation license plate grants, including one to put up a new ceiling in the old Allenstown meeting house, um, on a much larger scale than this building. So I'm just saying that as long as this building is in public custody, it is also eligible for public help, a, as a historic building. And as a person who worked for twenty-four years for the state preservation office, I would be more than happy to work with the school board and the Grange and anyone else to draft a grass, grab the application for that, if you wish to, to continue to own the building, at least for a while longer, and consider, uh, uh, this, this repair work that needs to be done, which is not catastrophic, and should come in much under ten thousand dollars. But also, in order to do that, there would have to be a, an evaluation report done of the condition of the building, and I've done about two hundred of those reports in my career, and I would be happy to do such a thing as that if I could have access to the building, and value of the report that would deal with the, the, um, benefits and virtues of the building, but also would diagnose the, the defects or any structural issues, uh, that's, that kind of report's necessary in order to obtain one of these ten thousand dollar grants. So there's paperwork involved, and I, I received some of that today from the state preservation office. I, I don't wanna take any more of your time, I appreciate your generosity of your letting us come into this meeting, and I know you've got a long agenda, and, uh, but I will, if, if, either my two colleagues from the Grange would like to say anything, it's all right with you, or I'll defer to them and yield my time, I take that, thank you.
Jeff, anyone have a question?
Um, I'm just curious if there's any information on when that, um, old school building, which we know is the Grange, became unoccupied by students.
Unoccupied by students? I'm sorry, what was the question, what was the question? When, last time the students were in the building?
When was it, eighteen eighty-five?
Well, the part, the, the town came into ownership of the building in eighteen eighty-five, the building closed to classes, I think around nineteen fifty-five, I think that that would be the time that, if the Grange probably would have moved here, um, so, uh, I know that the Grange's been there for more than fifty years, at that time, the building would have been looked upon as, as been supplanted by the public, consolidated schools of Pembroke, and I presume that's the time that the Grange involvement began, so it's quite a while ago, sixty, sixty odd years ago.
Yeah.
I'll let, I'll tell you, I'm just, I'm just speaking to that, if you want.
I want to speak to the, the Grange when, um, it, it started, you know, when the Grange was town hall.
I have a hard time hearing, so, there with me. The Grange moved in there after the town home, the Grange, uh, owned it, the, uh, town hall. They bought it for a dollar from the town. And, uh, I was away in the service, so I don't know specifically the date that they moved in there, but the little schoolhouse, when I was young, was a scout house, and then the women's club was in there for a while, and then the Grange, and the, uh, Rebecca's cohabitated with the Grange, but the Grange, uh, funded the work that was done on it, and the, uh, water and lights and whatever. To my knowledge, the only funds that the town, uh, or school district put in was when, uh, the trees were threatening and I tried to get them to cut them, and they cabled them instead, and I didn't agree with the way they were cabled, but that's another story. And, I see Josh, very happy to see him down because there was a definite threat.
They were before your time.
Yeah. So, uh, I don't know, I'm, would be happy to work with anything to, um, promote the preservation, um, will donate to, um, the, whether it's preservation work or whatever. So, um, we recognized when the ceiling came down that it was beyond our feeble hands to do anything about it at this point. I do know that the other half of that ceiling came down years ago, and that was, uh, the point that, uh, was arrived membership and they removed that and put in the suspended ceiling, so. And, uh, I think at the same time they panelled the inside, whatever. If there's anybody questioning, uh, regarding the building, if I can answer, feel free to contact me or whatever.
Question for the chair.
Sure.
Does it make sense, based upon the information somewhat new, um, that we meet with the board select to see, I mean?
I can go, but I, I've been.
Right.
I can go back.
Well, only because of, you know, what Mr. Garvin is saying about the grants, and I think that that may be something that the select board may be interested in pursuing, um.
Do you folks have a plan to go, so I know that we talked on Thursday, do you have a plan to go to the select board meeting?
We can, I guess we're, what was happening tonight?
Um, I, I think originally, when we first talked about this, oof, seven, eight months ago, um.
I'm willing to come down and talk with them, I don't live in Pembroke anymore.
Okay.
But I continue, I gave up my job as director of the historical society, and I'm, I'm, uh, still the master of the Grange, and I come down here for the meetings, and right now, we're being in the library, and we have approval from the state Grange to utilize the state Grange building and books it, if we have to.
Um, because the, the original idea here was for us to transfer the building to the town. Um, we've gone in front of the town, we've mentioned to them the issues, we explained to them that we didn't feel the school board was the proper place for preservation of historical buildings, that, that idea would be on the town's roll, and it, you know, similar to the block towers, that's in the various, um, we have not heard back from them. Um, so it may very well be worth another trip, I mean, it's not too late to, to put that on board, is it? But I mean, even if this board gets approval, it already necessarily pulled the trigger on selling that, so.
Right, right.
I think that's, take your way, if you want, if you want.
Right. I think that's important to be said, I'm not sure if everybody can hear that, but, um, if the warrant article were to be approved, that we, that we have the blessing of the town to sell the property, uh, that does not necessitate that we take any action, uh, they give us the option to, so I guess that being said, adults are also, have, you know, there will be a couple boards teed up, there might be new people in here in a couple of months, um, so, I guess just throwing that out there, that if, even if that warrant were to pass, um, there would still be time for discussion, and that doesn't necessitate that we take any immediate action whatsoever.
I think the comment on that point is a very good one. Um, that, that warrant article also was raised to include public benefit, which is very commendable, and, um, uh, if that, I wonder if, if the committee would be friendly toward an amendment that would suggest that the warrant article is, should be, should pass, but that at the same time for, for public benefit, that a committee or a group or a further discussion or some sort of dialogue, as we're talking about tonight, should continue before a final decision is made, and that the aim of all of that should be the maximum public benefit. Because, uh, when a town has a historic building, that is part of the public legacy, but, um, at the same time, from what I've seen, I've read your, your minutes and I've read the minutes of the board of selectmen, I don't see that this was presented to the board of selectmen with any thoroughness or with any great detail, um, and I, I, I'm not surprised if they didn't give a response, because the way the ministry is, there was no questions particularly asked, and they did say in the minutes, at least, that it was up to the school board to do what you wish to do with the vote, they sort of washed their hands of the thing. Now, in Pembroke, unlike many other towns, we do not have a heritage commission, we have a historical society, um, and we have the meeting and sun court committee, but a heritage commission is an official town body that provides advice to planning board, board selectmen, any entity in town that comes up against a historical question like this one, we don't have that. So I think that in the case of this building, which is the first challenge youth have faced to dealing with a historic building, um, in the absence of a heritage commission, it would be good to guarantee that we are gonna have some kind of a dialogue. If you would be willing to accept a friendly amendment, that we can talk about that later on.
That would be, uh, by the school board, it would be, it would be, it would be restructuring after.
Actually, the way the warrant is, it could be, um, recommended under a warrant article twelve, ordering towards the, to choose agents and committee relation to any subject brought up in this warrant, and it, in the warrant, there's the item about potentially, you know, getting permission to sell the building, then, as Mr. Garvin suggests, a committee to investigate the historical component of that, and the public group may be added right on, you know, if it's much needed.
Yeah, we have a history, I mean, we, we did that in village, I mean, it's a much smaller property, it's, you know, it's a different property, but we did do that for village, we put together a, a committee and we talked about it, and ultimately, we, we sold that property, but I, I would have, you know, I, I think it's probably, especially if the town's gonna show no interest in, to non-property, I think it's definitely something worth at least discussing, so.
I did not hear the name and town of the gentleman who was speaking after Mr. Garvin.
Yeah.
Now, we have your name, and if you no longer live in Pembroke, where you live now?
That's me.
Your name and where you live, please.
Name's, I don't know.
Can you now live in?
You live there.
No.
Where do you live?
Where do you live?
Franklin.
Franklin.
It's Peel Box.
Thank you for coming down, speak with us tonight.
It's Peel Box, five eleven.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jim has lived in town forever, and he's been a Grange member since he was fourteen, and.
That's my great-grandfather up there, I just walk.
He's had a lot, he knows a lot of history as well, Mr. Garvin, I'm so pleased they were able to come and allow us to come and speak tonight. My main concern is preservation at this point, the Grange does have places they can go to, however, my question is, and concern, if it goes to the town, in seeing what has happened with other buildings, the Union Street Building, the oil fire station, um, the village school, that this could go into someone else's team, that's my concern. So I don't know what we can do to hopefully, uh, work together that this doesn't happen again, so I'm not sure why, I think I don't quite understand why, where it has been really no, no cause to the school district, uh, you know, we have educators, because the Grange has taken care of it for all these years. I've only run apart, my husband would love to be here, tonight, I already turned six, um, in, in the Grange in the last nine or so years, but his uncle was, then he was fourteen, and so he was ninety-four, lived eight years in the Grange. And we do try, a lot of people don't know who and what we are, but we do try to give back to the community in many ways, one of the projects that I took over because of Uncle asking, um, as he was dying, please continue to give those third graders those lectures, um, so we do that, that's one of the many projects that we do, we do many things in town, um, kinda quietly, I guess, just not a lot of people know what we do. And then, the other thing was, he asked my husband, he said, could you please do a new floor as you enter that, we call the Grange building? So we've got the tiles up, but we haven't put down, you know, some floors, and we were willing to pay for that. My husband probably most, usually once a week was doing, um, the lawn there, maintaining the lawns, volunteering to mow the lawns, to cut back the bittersweet, um, his cousin, uh, his uncle John's daughter, has started to paint my fence, um, I know, they, uh, Jim took care of the play pool, um, we went in that day that we found this ceiling, uh, down to do maintenance within the building, you know, wash windows, um, his cousins are making curtains, you know, that kind of thing. So we tried, we have tried not to come to the town for any months, so this is, so I guess I'm not sure, when there's more in our, maybe Josh has been good, my husband's been speaking back and forth with Josh to come in and take a look at things, it was just, we knew at this point, we no longer had a lease, which I believe was a ninety-nine year lease that we had, or something like that, of course, the lease that we had. The lease that we have.
Oh, no, the fee was a fifteen year, and then there was, that was the second one. And then there was a three year. I tried to get some, three years.
So we've had leases over the years. And I guess Jim had come in to one of these meetings and had asked too about renewing that lease a few years ago. And it never came to fruition. So...
I think at this point, I think you have some point for the board to, at least, before it gets, a fore sale sign is dropped in the front door, you have to go take the property, figure out what the desire of the townspeople is regarding that property. I don't think we're ever going to touch with this board to necessarily make that into a barbershop, but...
Or someone was saying, you know, let's go to Conoveriums. And I just think of Concord with the train station in Concord. At some point, a few people made a decision for that train station to go, and it is now a parking lot. And it's just so sad to see that history is gone for Concord. That's a draw, you know, would have been more of a draw for Concord. They're trying to do some restoration there. But we have a town in number two.
A question for Josh, theoretically, because what you know of the building. Roof is okay. I mean, as far as if it's sat for another year, say. Is there reasonable expectation of damage? Is there...
It's okay from what I see. The structure is what it is. I don't think the walls are going to keep it. The ceiling, the collapsed ceiling, and I don't know if you guys have been in, that has fallen within the last month or so.
Yeah, one corner.
Yeah, so the whole thing has come crashing, whereas seven months ago, we had come to you and said there were signs that there was, that was going to happen. It did happen. We're in the process of cleaning that up. Would that be, I would probably foresee the rest of it going at some point, just because that stuff dominates throughout time. But the actual structure of the building?
It's not leaks or anything like that?
It's not that I know of. One thing, she just mentioned the flooring tile. Now that I've been in there, that asbestos flooring tile, so we can't really, that would be one red flag where asbestos isn't bad in our world, but the price just went up unfortunately. Because to remove that, and it's removed in areas, it's not removed in other areas, we would need a colored professional.
Well, I know, we just dealt with some of that, but if you blast a baguette and call from them for a couple hundred dollars, they don't want to take it away. Because we just did, my sister just did demolition of Pembroke, and that's exactly what happened. We found just a couple little pieces of tile, asbestos. And we called the company and cost them two hundred, so we didn't put it in the dumpster, but we got the clean bill from them, you know, and whatnot.
Right.
I recognize your face, but I'm sorry, I just don't know anything. I think I'm at the table.
Pat Power.
Thank you.
I've written my old friend, Alexa.
And you do live here in Pembroke, correct? Thank you.
The roof, to answer your question about the roof, I believe, and I think Jim looked at it, Josh looked at it, my husband looked at it, Dan Calucci looked at it. He's been doing some things for the building here in town. The roof itself, I believe, was replaced fifteen years ago.
Look at the roof. All right.
Fifteen years ago. And the Grange did take that to be done. And so I think that's still in okay shape. I think it's just the ceiling on your knees that, like Jim said, the lab let go and...
Okay. I think we're going to move on. I think we've got some folks on the board of interest. I was talking about before, anything happen to the board?
Did I hear correctly that currently there is no active lease on the building?
That's correct.
Thank you.
We thank you very much for letting us go on to the board. Let's leave it today.
I have one more question. So what does happen if it's three days, that we can maybe, through this moment that Jim talks about, have that meeting, that's what it is?
You have, you're right, four or thirteen. I don't have any time. Just wanted to talk about community and...
Right. It'll be, it's going to be the article, is there a need to be one?
And is you, is no way that you can pull that on warrant article at this point?
Not this one.
It'll be on your best interest that it's...
It's not that it's in our, whether it's in our best interest or not, we've already done a public hearing and it's been published. So by statute, it's, and like Andy said, it's not have to be acted on. But it was written, and the public hearing was held, so it will be beyond the law.
Unfortunately, we didn't have this information when that decision was made, so, go ahead.
My understanding from attending our town's district meetings is even if an individual does not have the blessing of the School Board, an amendment can still be made by a citizen to amend a warrant article. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Go ahead.
I think in, at town meeting, if you could get up and make a presentation like you just did here, I think that would go a long way to, you know, informing people. I'm sure there's not a lot of people that know about it.
I suppose then it could possibly fail too, right? So then it could...
Which should also be in your interest. Which would be in your interest.
Which would be in our interest. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much for coming. As I said, you're welcome to stay the rest of the night, but I think you made me know a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, pre-school calendar.
So Kathy, yeah, Kathy just put it in a little while ago. We may not have seen it earlier today. We had discussed this on SAU, trying to move toward a more common calendar. Administration had discussed it. They, we talked about it at both SAU board meetings. We took it to the executive board meeting, and they recommended that Pembroke look at the calendar first, because as long as Pembroke was willing to be in line with Concord, they felt that they could try to be in line with us as much as possible for the ascending towns or aligning PA who's aligned with Concord, where our students go to our location center. So Kathy drafted a calendar for Pembroke based upon the Concord calendar. So I think like the draft, she proposed those in there for you to look at. We haven't looked at this yet in schools. We started with the exec board, and then they asked us to bring it here. If you're okay with that, I will give the draft version to the principals to let them get from the staff and board. The draft contract has matched Concord, and they have a different number of days than we do. And we're also a little bit up in the air at this point, because if CBA passes, we'll be going to hours of days.
Right.
So there's a little bit of legal room. I think she mirrored Concord. If the CBA passes, we are also going to add a third day to the beginning of school, so that might change ours a little bit. But in concept, this has the days that Concord takes vacation, it has the days that they do their special development. So some decisions will need to be made. Each district has their own traditions, which is conversations that we've had. Certain people like their open houses on certain days. So if we go in this direction, then it doesn't mean making changes.
So does this need to be acted on at this point? Tell me if...
No.
You think that's in the air?
Yeah. We would like to have it done as quickly as possible, but I need to be able to, okay, will you get it to schools for their input? And then also give you guys some time. Tonight, if there are any red flags that you've noticed of looking at quickly, that you say, hey, I can never support having no school on this day, or something's missing that I couldn't support. So I think it's not anything like...
People want to look at this and then induction, have the schools look at it at the same time? Does that seem to make sense?
I want to open the camera.
Okay.
So CBA means hours of days. That has implication on whether or not we can continue visiting by class? Can you explain that one more time, so I may try to...
Sure. So the new CBA has additional hours, and within our school day and the number of days, we have filled in five snow days.
Okay.
So we know when the last school will be, unless there are more than five snow days. Right now, with our structure, we have a hundred and eighty days, and then those are bad days. Again, it shouldn't take up five days, but they don't get added on to the end, like, oh, okay.
That's a thought. Just wanted to add. Thank you. Any other questions on town? Good.
So what we're discussing is not acting on this tonight, but allowing other vendors to take a look and then come back and make a decision?
They are looking for us to make a decision first. I would like to give it to our principals, so that they can get feedback from the staff, from our staff.
So this would stay in Pembroke. Pembroke schools first. We did not, not an opportunity to look at it, and it kind of initially implies that we're going to help the other district.
So then we're not officially approving. We're giving a tangible approval?
Yeah, you don't... Okay.
You don't have to approve anything tonight.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand. Okay. Thank you.
Is there else?
Melanie.
Are you okay with this approach, the exec board?
I think I can.
Anything you want to ask?
Yeah, I do. I see the exec board, there are some towns that have certain days that are always up. One of the first ones that came up, of course, was Deerfield Fair. And Deerfield always has that day, and obviously Concord doesn't. But it was the census, and so had the meeting, even though they all have their own individual days, but their reluctance to give up. They wanted to know what Pembroke was going to do because of everybody's tie-in with Pembroke town. And because the tie-in would be stagnating, the belief was that if we would take a look at it, find out, you know, give our indication of what we believe to be reasonable, if, you know, with respect to Concord, and, you know, getting input from the faculty and staff that are building, they'll come back to us. And then from there, I mean, it may start with Pembroke. If we can look at it and say, no, we just can't match. But if we agree that there are commonalities we want to explore, then it goes, you know, to the exec, or back to the exec board.
I have a question for our exec board representative regarding the Deerfield Fair. I'm just, is the concern more that if a Deerfield student is absent, that that will be, that may be an unattained absence? Or is that in the same class time? Any idea?
Tradition. And tradition is probably even more important than missing class time in some areas. And since I teach in a town that has historically not given just one day but two days for Deerfield Fair because of large, you know, large absentee rates. So what Deerfield has done and what other communities have done is just said, all right, we just, you know, it may be a PD day, it may just be a day out, but it's not going to be school day.
Thank you. That helps. I'm just curious, do we have, as far as the day, and I don't even know, does anyone know who the Deerfield Fair is?
Much. Friday is the...
Thank you! I'm just curious, do we have any kind of historical data about attendance on that day that we could evaluate and make a decision?
Well, we don't see it from students. They all live at Concord, so for us, it probably wouldn't have any impact at all.
Gotcha. Okay.
But with the calendar, it would be...
Did you come down now? Yes, there's a couple tuition there or whatever.
But it would be their own history school too.
Right.
You know, if we do the calendar, we do the collaborative calendar, then it's not only folks feeding into Pembroke, but it's also the towns of every...
And anecdotally, there are Pembroke kids that...
I'm sure. I'm sure. I'm sure.
I think there, there may be those little days that are not common enough, okay? Because Deerfield may say, hey, we'll match you day for day, but we're taking the Deerfield Fair off, which means we know we're going to be in school two sixteen, and you're going to get out on two sixteen. So those are the types of decisions that can be made once they see what Pembroke's going to do.
Just regarding the Pembroke Fair, I know that we have students who have art exhibits, and a lot of families like to take their family and see what our students have done. It does see an impact on a certain level, so that's why I'm curious about the historical data. So we could see, does the absentee, you know, rate, if we had something tilting and showing us that it really affects our school day, I think it would give us something concrete to make a decision on. Thank you.
Great. Three.
I'm going to ask for it. It's so good. I didn't make coffee.
Did you write that down?
I think... It isn't here.
It's time. It's okay.
It has some folder, but... Here, that's got to be on, come on.
Having this over here, I think.
I mean, do we want to go line by line, or do we want to see what's on there and discuss? I mean, there's somebody who could be knocked off pretty easily. I don't know if anybody has emailed our state reps, but I can commit to the minute this week. I'm sure that the school will pop in, that would be something.
Can we go about the line by line, see which lines have been met?
Fine, with that, I can do that. Absolutely. Send out positive, everyone do the first one? Sorry, I have to get down to the table. Send out positive information regarding...
Okay. Has that happened? Have we had a point? Did Andy just take charge, like it's...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Send out positive information regarding our schools on all available platforms. Comments will be disabled. Post ones forward for the generals. This is, really, if everybody talks, we're not...
But you don't really have a social, Facebook presence anymore, is that right? Is that still out here?
I don't believe it. More the schools. Schools, right, right. Right, that was me, the, it's not even that. But I think this was specific to the board using a platform.
I think we had talked about that, I mean, after we had, after we had this as a goal, talked about whether it was a way in our best interest to have a social media page. I mean, because there is some redundancy there. There are links to board agendas on the board sites, on the available page. There's links to supporting documentation. So, I mean, if that's what we're saying for social media, that it sounds like we're on target. I mean, if you're talking about the dedicated Facebook page, then no, basically.
So I think, Craig from Ron, really went to Facebook, social media platforms, whether or not one would be out there, and even this requires more conversation as to whether they need a platform with more participants in them. But I think the idea here was that we wanted to be out there on social media, but we need to figure out how to do it carefully.
And I believe that's why we had decided, you know, the comments would be disabled. And so basically, it's just another point of information, because yes, the information is available on our new website, but it's also really incredible how many people don't go to pursue that information. And so for us, just to provide a link or, you know, a public page, and we list the events on there, again, disabling the comments, so it's just another source of information.
I think there's more to this, if I recall correctly, than what we could do. This is, this is very complicated, if I recall. This is, this could require some effort.
It can't be, no one individual board member could set up the page that, it would need to be done by IT. It has to be a school page, so that's where I think it's a little, we would need to get some advice on, because you're not fully employed, so how do you set that up? And how legally you can do, or any of you can have access to that, I don't really know. Which is, if you want me to pursue that, I will, but I would need to get some advice on that.
Is there a public relations or media special for the SAU?
We have years of experience of public relations special for that. We don't have them under contract currently. Is there somebody that might be appropriate to invite them to a future meeting down the road to discuss this? Or it'd be Josh Murphy, or is somebody specific to Pembroke?
I would want to meet with that first. If you want me to.
I would be a favor, I would take that legal advice before pursuing.
I think that's probably about to go, if this board wants to jump out on social media, then certainly, like, that's the first one.
Right, I wonder if it would be worth reaching out before we pay...
I mean, it's all for the school board's sake.
Yeah, they, yeah, sure they, yeah. That's pretty legal advice, yeah.
I never think I've run into it already.
I know they were cautioned against it in some of their workshops.
But they're also playing the world. But they're also playing the world, right.
But we're, I think our approach is a little bit different, because I'm sure it's cautioning against school members going out, and you're talking about your whole control, right?
So, yeah, now the question's over, that's, uh, something that they did even do. Okay, so Paige is going to work on that.
How do you reach out to both the attorney and the National School Board Association?
Should a board member reach out to the National School Board Association?
Um, that, I can do that. Thank you.
So, third one of the communications, it's school programs that may be available to send information home to the entire Pembroke community.
Remember that special correctly, it was like the one call now and, but for not just fantasy. So there was something with the entire community, right?
I mean, this was another trouble. I, I think there was some legal and technical issues surrounding it.
Can we find out what this is in order to make an informed decision?
The only, um, platform that I've ever heard of is something like Nix Hope, with the police department. But that requires people to go and subscribe. So I think the struggle has always been how do we reach the entire community? That's always the question, in one way.
I think we could do something much more simple, like, you know, a monthly district newsletter that, and we ask that to be posted on the towns. Because a town has the information they could use, and things like that. If we, if we could monthly just provide, here's what's coming up for the, the coming month, and ask the town to post that on their page, then maybe at least a central place where most of the town knows can go to it for information on the, or that.
I hate to be very down-reversive, there's been resistance to that, but in the past, it's not to say that we charge. Like, we wouldn't be, um, willing to that, but we've had some issues there.
Um, two things to go off of that. Number one, Nix Hope. Could we have taken a quote on what that would be, because that would be helpful as far as, in addition to the one call now, called advising people when school is being canceled, but also to these meetings. I understand that people have to subscribe, but you also can log into the website if you're without subscription. It is so convenient to get a text message when you are subscribed about things. And I'm just curious what the cost impact would be to pursue that. And the other piece is, um, in addition to a newsletter, what about if, um, you know, what kind of contact do we have with the selectmen as far as just announcing what has? It's just another platform, right? To announce this is what we have going on as far as our community events, plays, whatever. So it's not a newsletter, but it's kind of, here's what we have coming up, advising them. So it's another public platform to share that information for people who may not be sitting here or watching the video. And, and it's great.
I, I think we would need direction on what you want us sharing. We just, we all, each school has their own school calendars, there are things, the local calendar. Do you want us to reach out to the town and ask if they were publishing links to the calendar? We just need direction, or the board is asking the administration to do something.
Do we know?
Well, I think the parents and, you know, those who are related to school children do find that. But there's a substantial portion of the population that has no idea what's been going on in this world.
But it, it's funny you say that, I, I agree with you completely. But it's funny that diversity basketball gym is completely packed. So people want to find out if they can.
Especially with cameras up too, I mean, that was, that was part of.
I'm not saying that we don't do more public reach out, but I mean, there's a sign on the corner. You know, when, when there's a play, there's a sign up out front. I mean, there, there are avenues that we, we go down. And if people want to find out the information, it is certainly out there. Um, and, and people have shown an ability to go out and get that information. So, we, we haven't been negligent here.
So then maybe the wording of number three is an accurate word, is send information home. I agree with you, we do have ways of informing the public. And that sign up there, although we have had a lot of pushback over the years about that sign, has been of help.
Absolutely.
But when this was written, apparently it was important to us to include to send home information. And I think that's the deal. But minus that phrase, that we, we are.
What did it cost, we did a panel last year, it was a big issue. Okay, if you want to put out some kind of a quarterly newsletter, if it's a few hundred dollars, we get everybody to town, we talk to twelve hundred buyers, that's short line. You know, do it accordingly, you know? You guys know most of your events well in advance, for the most part.
But then we get into the same problem that I believe we have with the, um, social media. Who does it? I mean, and that's, you know, are we willing to hire somebody to do the work? Because, bottom line, somebody has to do it. And it has to be somebody.
The field professional.
Exactly.
Can't be spell the words.
There, there, and there, yes, your, and yours, exactly.
These, these folks here, probably already got plenty of work to do, I can almost guarantee it.
Well, I mean, this is a relationship, if we're willing to hire somebody, um, on some sort of retainer basis to do the work, then I just think that, that may be the next logical step. But having all of these wonderful ideas without putting money and personnel behind it. We'll be talking about this again, or somebody will be talking about this again when this is reviewed.
So, I'm kind of getting the feeling that we, you know, it doesn't sound like we're going to take any sort of action in this way. But I, I'm, so I'm just thinking out loud at this point, if we're talking about the possibility of mail-in mailer, um, would it be worth it if, you know, when, when budgets settle down and we decide to tackle this, um, maybe put out one of those, that is a survey to the community of how they would prefer communication? And ask them to, you know, return mail it, and if people, if you get a significant number of things back saying, hey, we wish the board had a social Facebook presence, or you wish we got quarterly updates in the mail, then we could take some sort of action on that. If there's not much of a response, or the results are, you know, don't point us in the right direction, then we have some really, we have some survey muckies.
The problem with the survey mucky is that we've got other people who aren't on the internet. You know, we have little certain. You know, who are not on the internet.
You're not going to reach everybody.
We need to do the best that we can to reach all the information. The mailing might, I, I really like the mailing idea, to find out, you know, who might be an.
You could put them in, you know, on the mailer, and also fill it out online and, like, that's great. I literally, I, I get so much junk mail now, that I, I don't look at anything. You know, it, it, that's why I'm told, I'm afraid we send out a mailer, spend money on it, and nobody sees it.
And I mean, fair point, I mean, we, we hear, and I heard it the other night, transparency, we're not transparent. We know, you know, we, we get four people, I'm not going to pick on anybody here, four people that show up at school board meetings. You know, we spend hours here discussing just about everything, but we get blamed for not being transparent. I, I don't know if a solution is there, but.
If we had a media person put that newsletter on the S A U's website. There's plenty of people that grab links off the S A U's website and put it out on the social media pages. I, you know.
Electronic.
Yeah.
Populated out to social.
Yeah, because they get out the social media, and then, you know, one group's got nine hundred people, another group's got twelve hundred people, another group's got eighteen hundred people. Then by word of mouth, just sheer word of mouth, you're just going to say, hey, you might want to look at this, you know?
I mean, that's not bad thought, it's a lot of expensive shit and stuff out, to do, produce electronics. Someone's still got to produce it.
Right. And, and I mean, even at this point, you know, we as school board members could take that information off of the S A U's website, like the budget information, grab a link and put it on. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, even. And could take it off and put it on to the social media platform.
Put a share link from the S A U. If we hired someone, we'd have interference.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think, look, we need to, I think you're back at the social media platform too, is a matter of an issue.
Right.
And getting things home on the third one.
They may be a combined issue, because I mean, a lot of.
Yeah.
People who are in the schools, social media is where they get their good or bad information, uh, both will help with it.
I was just going to say, I really think, what both of these things encompass is community outreach. And is there any profession, or of course, and I mean, what relationships, that can really come in and guide us? Because we're kind of making guesses, and it might be well worth it. If there's a certain profession who can guide us along without paying too much.
We refuse, Tammy, Tammy, she's here at town, she's also a former school board member. We refuse her in the past, I mean, of stuff, she could go ahead and shoot the mail, I think she has one.
Do we send that out as a, as a special proposal?
Yeah, two years ago, the, um, about five days.
No, we, we either, she was a known blonde, able to do short turnaround time. She had very, very delightful of a spouse, maybe a short life. She donated a ton of time to the church. For what we did, we, we got like four times as much behind the surface.
She was on the village school committee and donated her talent to that as well, and a couple of official resources. None of the charges.
She was very, very good with the school board.
My concern is without doing a request for, for proposal, it doesn't look, it looks preferential that we're choosing someone who's an ex-school board member. And I would like, I think it would be beneficial for this, for the boards to put out a request for proposal. If no one else makes a proposal, that's the way it goes. But it looks like we're cherry picking people who we don't do that.
It's our, our message, we can cherry pick.
I, my opinion, I, I would have no problem hiring who we want to hire. It's our, our message, the message we want to get out. We should be able to pick who we want.
Furthermore, we're not necessarily sure what that message is. Correct, she's been helping, actually framing, helping us frame the message. You know, we, we have a big, foggy idea of what we think we want. I don't know how it would work with an R T.
She is helpless focus, because she does have that background with us. But she's really has helped us focus the message, what message we actually want to out. You're right, we brought her in, but, hey, we want to do this, and she goes, okay.
Thirty-two thousand feet of vision, and she kind of brings that down for us.
So to move this forward, what action would we like to take on this debate? Could we get a quote for what Nix Hope class is, at least to find out any clout to that?
I think we need to sharpen what message that we want to get out, even for next year.
So when would we like to revisit this, or does the whole operate on?
I think I love, um, yeah, along this year. I'm wondering if, um, if we want to, you know, pick, obviously, all of these goals are important. I'm wondering if we want to pick a couple of the more pressing and complicated ones, such as the one we're on, and the next one, three or four two, and tag those as our priority items, instead of, you know, getting those on the agenda at least once a month, um, so we can start picking some of these things up. But we're, we're not going to go through this whole debate and take action on all of these. Uh, but I think we've identified the third one as something that's complicated, needs more discussion. So I think maybe we, it's feasible we put that on the agenda for next time, um, to look a little more in depth.
That makes a point.
Otherwise, we're going to be here on this, on the, on the.
I know the administrators are loving watching the discussion work. They brought it up.
We'll get some work for next one.
Is that, is that, is that right?
Is that okay?
Is there a systematic way to make sure that we are doing that on a monthly basis? That would be my question, we can put it up.
Put it on the agenda, put it right in the agenda.
Okay, and then would we say which goals we're going to review, or which area of each goal?
I think we, I think we'd specifically not say, I think the next agenda should not say goal review, we should say.
It's school programs that may be available, I think we pick one or two.
Okay.
Depending on how complex, this first one, they were going to be quite complicated. I think that might be a good one to try and hammer out in a single line. That, that seems to make more, make sense, by your perspective.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. You've missed the case of a, that happens?
No.
That official?
Yeah, so we get those dollars from last year.
Okay, we can leave it up there. Uh, I think it's strange, huh? Those won't come back till April May, something like that. Thanks. Four ways to gather information, we got it, school culture and climate, potential administrative surveys, all staff students. I think that's, I think you could spend all night here without it too.
Yeah.
Maybe convene some now.
I think just from the input we've gotten from the administration, that's something, you know, teacher, T, you know, trauma, all that stuff, that's something I think we have to probably start looking sooner towards than later.
Put that on the first meeting of April. Continue studying feasibility of the addition of Coach School. Now, channel, I'll see you at the next meeting, John.
Um, I do not, I was hoping Kevin would show up tonight. I know that he got some time at S U's meeting, it's been a little while now, but, um, I'm not sure. I think he actually recorded up on that already, so, Sandy, do you?
Uh, we have a meeting the other night, just to kind of bring the people who weren't able to attend up to the stage.
Time frame, Wednesday, April?
No, Wednesday, what?
What timeframe, Wednesday, April? Gen, general card, I don't know.
You asked us to try to have something for June.
I have a question about that, since there is an official committee of the school board, or are there ministerial?
Yeah.
What's that, you want academics? Providing a environment that increases achievement in the areas of academic, intellectual, physical, and social growth, that meets the needs of all students.
I think we need to define what that environment is. This is kind of a, it's not really specific enough to know if we can measure that. We need to measure the goal.
Do you understand the traffic pattern at each building? All right, I'm, I'm on a, I'm on a, yeah, this might bite me. How's your traffic pattern doing here?
It seems to smooth itself out after the first month of the school. I mean, we will inevitably always have congestion in the parking lot by virtue of one way in, one way out. But I think that things have kind of corrected themselves over time, once the fewer parents get the rhythm of routine of drop off and pouring, because of the activity.
Is it better without the U?
Without what?
Without this area out here, sacred. Sacred, okay, which is important in the, in it, I was in a, bringing in work for the divorce thing. I mean, it's never a pleasure. How's your, uh, building in and out? You've always been pretty well okay, right? It depends on the day, and I can't even predict, um, when we get a storm, it's going to be a problem. Um, if T A is backed up, for probably the same reason, we're going to be a little bit backed up. Um, the, uh, we have, uh, ten minutes of full going, um, and then it goes away. It's fast, it doesn't happen. So there are times where I feel like it's backed up pretty far, but most days, it seems to flow pretty well. Um, and I don't, I can't figure out people who don't complain, we can do this for it, or if it's a real problem. Nobody's complaining to me about fifteen o'clock.
I comment on that one at the chair.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm there every morning. I would, I, it's rarely backed up onto the road.
Yep.
It's usually contained, by the way. Um, I'll say that, I have seen some complaints on Facebook. Um, I would say, from my perspective, and maybe it's not a thing I can say publicly, or whatever, anyway, the problems in the T R S drive are people problems, um. The problems in the TRS driveway are people problems, um, some of it is the design, okay, so, so teachers come in and don't wait in the line, they pass the line to get into the parking lot, which most of the time is fine. Similarly, a bus that comes in will not wait in the line of cars, it will pass the cars so that they can leave the bus circle. I, I think there are some people that don't understand those two things, um, and so they see teachers going by, they need to park, and they go, well, I can go by too. So there are some parents that jump the line, let their kid out in the middle of wherever, not the recommended place, and that does, there are some dangerous situations once in a while. But I don't, from my perspective, there's nothing physically we can do about that without adding a third lane. The only thing I would add, out of the scope of this, is I would love someday to see a sidewalk up that driveway, there's a decent amount of kids nearby, you could walk to that school that, once the snow comes and there's snow nights, there's not a sidewalk up in the school.
And I would say dismissal, it can be, uh, plain odds, if the buses are there, we're in better shape than if the buses are not there. Uh, if the buses are not there, uh, you know, the bell rings, you guess, we have twenty kids texting in the building from a number of places, and kids don't look, they, they don't see a bus, they start running to the parent, they start on the other end, they go. That can be, um, a problem, we don't, we don't really know if the bus is there, and that sounds kind of crazy, but, bell will ring, like, oh, well, here we go. If the buses are there, it's much more organized, because depending on the buses, empty in less than ten minutes. But other than that, I did get one complaint about, I don't know, a kid who run out in front of a traffic, not even looking, uh, but that's, you know, it was, yeah, but.
Just to touch on Andy's point, the sidewalk going out, St. Cruz's school has looked at that, um, starting a sidewalk there, getting the students all the way up. Also, starting in the back of the building and taking a sidewalk all the way to the Broadway back there, um, where we've fallen on the ropes in those areas, it's a little bit behind community, such a concur, who unfortunately get a bigger broader skill. But that's been talked about, it's been looked at, and I'd probably go on record saying I might give an evidence time for it, I'm not, my memory's had to shine on that, so.
And I, and I do think there is some folks would like to see somebody out there waving traffic, and trying to move traffic, um, I think we were running on, like, what happened at TA's constituency, it's a real problem, and, uh, boy, you know, it's, we. But I think Andy's correct, and I'm, yeah, we may, because we, I do think that. Well, I see.
Well, we can just start with the buses, so, now, where, where, we have it down, uh, to a ninth, our, our goal is phenomenal. We're, but the problem is, we asked for twenty minutes, uh, and it was approved last year, and because of the bus situation, we don't have that. So we're losing two and a half hours a week of instruction that we could have, uh, but we haven't figured out a bus moving between the two schools, which is unfortunate, and I think it's been a lot personally, because of the public. So that equals out a lot of time by the end of the school year, so, ten hours a month. We have almost a week of instruction that we have to be here, that we're getting away, because we can't figure out that. Even with that twenty minutes per day, are we still meeting, meeting the requirements of the state, which are three hours in the morning and three hours in the afternoon, so we're still meeting that requirement, or?
Okay, any questions? Chop that one up, just for now, Rick. By the budget that's most transparent way possible, that supports the thing students and faculty performance that is responsible and favorable to taxpayers. We're gonna come back to this. Quick statement?
Sure, go right ahead. Just one request, uh, um, adding Amber, whoever's most appropriate, I think at this point, now that, now that everything is finalized, um, I would love to see a folder that's available to the public in the S E U website, to have all of the things that somebody went to ask for, in order to place the, the roster, um, all the M S forms that we gave out from the end of night, the full budget, um, the presentation that, that I was referencing, the M, the M B C, I think we need to take the notes off of that still. But if we can have one folder with all that stuff in one place, just to make it pretty easy, which is simple to grab, it's gonna be.
Kathy usually does that in budget information, could you, do you mind taking a look and seeing if you see something, if you have it out there, like?
Yep, sure will.
And would anything there?
Okay, the other thing, and I don't know, I, I think this is a, a problem, uh, all over the website, I've heard about it on Facebook, I've seen it myself, and I don't know if anything can be done. If I go to one of those pages, if I, if I go to even four minutes, whatever, if it's a SharePoint site, if I copy and paste that link, it doesn't work. Ask them to sign in or whatever, even though, I didn't have to sign in to get there, it happened, when I first provided our first copy of the budget, the M B C, Kathy said, oh, it's right here, I pasted that link in an email, they all said, we can't open that.
Right.
I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's a way to fix that, or make publicly available links, um, that's probably not a, a priority, because some of that, I know the community has been frustrated with.
I, I have a recommendation for that that I've encountered, so instead of clicking the link and going to the site, uh, if you hover over that link, and you say to copy link, and use that link, I have been successful in copying links.
Yeah, no. We're gonna, okay. Anybody else want to jump in on budget, or we're gonna jump down budget later?
Okay.
Establish long-term plans and projects between Rivers and Hempeth Academy?
ADA project, no, or C I D?
Uh, C I D. We're in pretty good shape, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, we have a warrant article, I hope that's a funded project for your request.
Okay. Establish and support a committee to plan the renovation of the Hill School, we did that? Review S A U ops, accessibility issues, and develop a plan for A D compliance?
So same thing, uh, we have gotten drawings back from the architect, and have started asking for applicable ones to sort of, to some of those projects.
Yep. Made an application for building aid, made some available, working on that.
The letter intends to do Jan-, in January, which has been done, um, the application itself is due June thirtieth, but it's going to be much more detailed, so I'm not sure if we can get away with filling in the information that we know at this point, and try to get ourselves in the queue, um, if you can find more on details about application, because we, we have partially no things right now.
Right, just, you're gonna need some, some details for, it's actually, there's no legislation, we have to, we got forward next year.
Bye.
I wasn't thinking.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering if we would be able to use some of these old, the initial drawings that we have, the last term, so we.
They are fairly detailed.
Yeah, just to get something in, even if we change our mind on what it's going to look like.
I was gonna say, as long as we can.
Get in the queue, and, yeah.
You can always update.
Yes, and if that's what they said, it's better to be in the queue and write files than with the little bit for your.
Well, that's a, that's been five years old, I mean, yeah.
Last one's kind of ironic, establish a small committee and gather public input, we got it in the future, the Greens building. I think, general, yeah.
Pending.
Pending, we're still pending on that one, I think we've, uh, everyone here seems to think that. Did you give the goals for now, that, you hear that we're gonna attack the next committee? You're good, I'll go back, good.
Oh, we have.
Ask for all related to, I'm wondering, we should talk about that before we talk about program.
Dan has.
We're, we're all good, we're good to go?
There's something on there.
I just turned on the beginning, we're good to go?
There's something on there about that, we can expand, follow up.
Excellent. For the studies, are we gonna give it over to?
Yeah.
Any other locations?
Um, so, I go through the proposed program of studies changes every year, but it occurred to me, you probably haven't seen the final product of this, so this is our current year program of studies, and you see that one of these is a, um, some swag. So that's the, every freshman, incoming freshman gets a hard copy, uh, there's additional copy that is always available on our website, this is not new, but additional copy will get updated, the revision data changed, that obviously is pretty funny. Uh, so, you will notice that, uh, the biggest change, uh, the first page that, uh, packet I gave for you, is in reference to lowering minimum requirements of graduation, we are currently at one-twenty, I'm proposing that we go down to one-fifteen. I know that this was, uh, brought up, uh, by a community member at, uh, last week's meeting, uh, you'll notice that on the, the revision data, that this is actually something that we've been talking about now for, uh, I'd say probably a month or so, or two months. Uh, and the reasoning behind that is frankly, it is becoming very difficult for us to provide enough collective opportunity to, to, to get that one. The state minimum is one hundred, in no way would I recommend that we go with the state minimum, uh, I think one-fifteen is probably inappropriate, uh, for a stressful land at this point. Uh, and that deduction of five credits would come from reducing life studies from ten credit requirements to seven point five, that's actually definitely part of the one way, and then the other two point five would come from the elective credits. Any questions regarding the minimum requirements of credits?
Uh, I, I do, but I'm gonna think about how I wanna phrase it, Chris, go ahead, Pat.
Does it have any impact on the staff?
There it is, so, as, you know, I said before, this, uh, this was put together prior to that meeting, I think that this gets us to a level that is appropriate with our current level of staff. If we were to, um, sustain additional cuts, we may have, you know, a problem with that, but I have also come up with an idea where our tech administrator, uh, facility, the Internet Learning Lab, uh, once a day, where they are essentially a staff member facilitating on, or that P P star, or U R, for students, and we have students that take advantage of that right now. But this would provide a more structured environment with additional staff, which would result in that, uh, more formal check. So that would allow us to provide additional opportunities for elective credit for our students, particularly in areas that we don't offer, whether that be, I mean, be like that app, or, you know, any number of them. But I will also say, the caveat to be like this, that, you know, we have some students that haven't done well on the, having an additional support, certainly educated, making it helpful.
All right, yeah, nice question, so, we needed to facilitate that cut, is this an area where if we drop it to a hundred and ten, like, a hundred and five, right, this is an area where we could see savings by that reduction?
I think it depends on the nature of those cuts, I mean, there are some, you know, if you were going to cut, let's say, a position that isn't on for elective credit, then, uh, you're probably not gonna see that. So for instance, if there were to be, uh, uh, let's say, some kind of support at all, you know, not a classroom teacher, and that's not my type of, um, I, I, the closer we get to the state minimum, uh, gets me more concerned. And there is also a, um, a challenge with this, if we were to drop it down to track, because what you could have happened is you could have juniors this year, that become seniors next year, coming into their senior year, we could take ninety-five credits, and all of a sudden, they only have to take, you know, two, three year one classes, that, that would generate some issues for us.
But there is a minimum number of credits for each student, I'd say, in order to maintain.
There is, there is, but, you know, that would in turn also lower, because it doesn't solve any problems if we lower the minimum graduation required, requirement from one-twenty to one-fifteen, though we still require seniors to take their credit back, that, that is all, yeah.
Um, I'm gonna go, for information, I'm not necessarily agreeing with this, what issue of going to, how do you practice, to going to the state minimum?
Uh, well, I was actually talking to Chris Motte about this today, and in Manchester, they did that, and the state minimum is exactly that, it is the fair minimum that you can go to, and, uh, you know, there are, and sometimes where, you know, I've had to, I've been asked to weigh graduation requirements in terms of liking, because of, let's say, a student's scheduling and flexibility, they haven't been able to get the ten required credits in life, so they just think it's seven point five, you know, you have a little bit of a problem there. I think going to the state minimum would A, not provide the, um, the education that I think members of students really benefit from, and happen by the front, um, I think it would be a significant departure from our organization, institutional agency, I mean, we, that significant difference are essentially taken away, almost a year's worth of credit that, that, uh, and it provides absolutely no flexibility in terms of, you know, students, they may have to go.
I mean, I'm just, it, it's kind of, it's kind of the, we've, we've at least gotta go here, there is sentiment in the community, we look at it as, you know, potentially two million dollar increase, there is some sentiment in the community, is, why should we give it any more than that? You know, taxes are high, they're asking for two million more dollars, my tax will be a rough thousand bucks, why should we be providing more than that?
My answer to that would be that my kids and other kids in the community do not deserve that.
We, we have other communities, and we were in this position a number of years ago, where the communities that are sending schools, they're seriously considering not sending the students here, and going through whatever legal criteria they needed to do, because there was a concern that we were not offering a quality education, because, excuse me, of, you know, revenue. Um, you know, Dan's right, we, we have a commitment to education, it's what makes them a family, and yes, there are those who are willing to suffer with the tax rate, we all suffer with the tax rate, but that's a decision we made to live in the nation. We also have other dual commitments to education, and I can't imagine that we will turn our backs on that, or the school.
And that's just to read on, just play a general draft, Pat, that's all, but the, the questions do need to be asked.
Okay, and that's fair, my other one, if I can, if I may, um, we did not fill two messages.
That's true.
Okay, what impact is that have, I noticed that we're still looking at the state first, which I get in the state minimum, are we going to be able to, to offer what our students need to make, to meet that minimum for you?
Well, I mean, as you remember, uh, it was not our intention to have to map it in the year, and so we can do that throughout the year, uh, but, uh, the market being what it is, we have to do that, uh, it is our intention to build one of those for next year, and I think that will allow us the flexibility and the force offerings, and that will, uh, you know, serve our students, uh, and, uh, provide us with the schedule and flexibility, and frankly, we weren't.
Okay, sure, okay, um, the extended learning opportunities, okay, to, if students are, I'm assuming students are able to earn credits through an E L O initiative, so if that's the case, um, we have thirty-seven and a half credits, period, do we limit the number of E L O credits that a student can take?
Uh, that's a good question, I would say we do that informally, uh, with school counselors, uh, and the reason I say that is, you know, E L Os take a number of different shifts, right, like, that could be, as, something in structure at that, the Internet Learning Lab that I was describing earlier, or it can be something, like, we have two students that go to the Valley Farms every day, they start their name. They start their day there, work very closely with Chris, develop business plans, you know, work on their skills when they come there. Those are two very different experiences. So, you know, I, I, I don't want to cap that because there is such a variable. Um, but, you know, there are obviously other things that they, you know, we offer many things here without them being traditionally allowed to. For instance, there isn't a graduation requirement right here for the academy diploma for oral language. But we offer, you know, Spanish one, two, three, French one, and some Spanish classes as well. So any of those beyond, uh, you know, really any of those fall into that elective.
Falls into the elective, can't, because that may not, okay.
I'll give you another example, Dan, right? Like, you can, you can earn twenty credits a band with the course of your four years here, and you're only required two point five.
So the rest becomes elective credit. And if you play N K band outside of school, I mean, this is also the ELO opportunity there as well.
Uh, yeah, I, well, I will just say from personal experience that the term band can take on many year credits. It can take on a lifetime, so, right. So there is a difference between, uh, you know, being a committed student out of community music school, let's say, and performing in recitals, or performing at the major school. And so it's in our, we have a role in discerning that. And, you know, I will say that we, regardless of what the ELO is, the requirements are essentially, you need to identify the standards that you hope to meet and identify the manner in which you're going to do that. And then request them. And so whatever that may be, you know, that is pretty, that's pretty broad. And so that can apply to many different things.
Thank you.
Okay.
On page six, in the type of diplomas that are listed, one thing that is absent, because I don't believe the school board is making policy on, is alternative diplomas. And that's our, that is for students with I E Ps that may qualify, that instead of just getting a certificate of completion, they could earn an alternative diploma, and that actually counts towards graduation rates. I do believe that is something we should talk about because I do believe that even a student who goes through twelve years deserves the right to get more than a certificate of attendance. If the New Hampshire D O E has to, out there, that we can make a policy on alternative diplomas.
I don't think I'm familiar with that, so I think any literature that could get on that would be char.
Yeah, I don't have objections.
Yes, you can also just D O, New Hampshire Alternative Diploma, and there's a bunch of documents that come up with D O E.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan, is that something that I would need to email you to request that you put on the future agenda? Can we check this, does the New Hampshire School Board may have a policy that we could take a look at? School Board Association?
We can do that.
Excellent, thank you.
I mean, I'll close that one more time, Pat, but I know, I'm warning you, you're coming. P A diploma with honors and high school honors distinction, um, with that diploma, there's ten credits of oral language requirement. I'm gonna ask the same question, if we eliminated P A diploma with honors, would it have any effect? On that?
Uh, I mean, I don't believe so. I think, uh, you know, the state doesn't require oral language, but obviously, uh, you know, institutions are learning and looking for that. Uh, and, you know, frankly, I, if the state doesn't require oral language, I don't think that's a certain argument that you don't have oral language. I, I, we have a number of students that have taken oral language classes. We actually have one that is interested in coming and exchange students, going to state. Uh, and, you know, they're not doing that because of the P A diploma with high honors, with honors. So they wouldn't have to, they have to have their information.
I guess my suggestion wasn't that would eliminate oral language, but it would reduce, demand oral language now to reduce that and the oral language requirement.
I don't think it, I don't think it would.
I'm done with that.
I can't imagine that the board is trying to balance the budget on that.
At this point, they have to make two million dollars, but they're, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars worth of decisions that won't be.
Well, I think at this point, we have to make a better, uh, argument for supporting the budget because this is not something we're charged with, not, we're not charged with reducing the number of credits. Or, you know, it's always a hundred, bothers me that we go to a hundred and fifteen from a hundred and twenty. The more you require on the student to get to that bar. Every time we lower the bar, we go towards the minimum. And minimum is never good enough, adequate is not good enough. Uh, I, I mean, I don't even like the term proficient, you know, it just doesn't, I, I don't think it embodies the spirit of what any of us expect from school, uh, when they're educating our kids. Um, you know, I, I, again, I don't, I, I don't like the one fifteen. That's pretty close to the minimum. You know, the life, the lifestyle, you know, we're losing two and a half credits there, right? Um, I mean, these kids, I mean, the lifestyle of going veterinary. And if we start taking away any education as far as fitness and wellness and whatever else, I, I mean, goes along with that, I think we're just endangering or putting them in danger of just becoming, you know, uh, unhealthy in that, in that respect, just in that little area right there. Um, so I have a hard time. I like that. I started having a kibbie over here when Dan said a hundred, you know, um.
I can agree with you, Martin, but I think it's, it's important for us as a board to understand that we need to bring something forward on March seventh to say, listen, if you want to cut eight hundred thousand dollars, this is what it's gonna look like, whether we like it or not.
I know, I'm disagreeing with that.
So whether, whether it's dropping these credits to a hundred, whether it's laying off six teachers, whatever we decide, we, we're gonna have to bring something to the table. Um, so we should, need to be proactive about what is we're gonna bring to the table, instead of a board in the future having to decide, well, this is what we're gonna have to come. That's all, that's essentially where I'm trying to get to.
But we'll be the number four to cut them off.
Right, but if we don't bring something forward to that meeting in March to say, okay, if you guys wanna cut eight hundred thousand dollars, this is what it looks like. If people don't even understand what it looks like, then why do you need to cut that money?
But I think we're hearing two different things to me. We're hearing Dan say, I believe, that the new program studies that the kids are going to be collecting from will have a hundred fifteen credit, which is, I think, real different than if we have to find a cut that was one of the places that we are going to cut.
I'm, I'm just looking for information to see if this is an area, because it was brought up, it was brought up in public hearing, to see if this is an area where we could find fit. Maybe it's not, maybe we're not comfortable, maybe, I, I don't know, I, I'm not necessarily comfortable. But we need to kind of flush out some of the questions that were asked at public hearings. And honestly, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to find eight hundred thousand dollars worth of cut that we can identify, so we can bring those forward.
But what about the so, what is that? I mean, I understand that the budget committee did not, but there was a significant number of folks in that audience who did not want to see an impact on the budget.
And hopefully, there will all come out, and we won't have to worry about it anyway. Doesn't mean we shouldn't be prepared for the questions to be asked.
Right. That's, I, I agree with it right here. One thing I guess is more of a statement than a question, I just wanted to say it for the record. Um, as you mentioned, there were two underfilled math vacancies last year, and not by choice. And if I recall, shortly after the beginning of the school year, we had folks in here concerned about how their students were gonna graduate on time. That was two positions. Um, so I think the community and the board need to keep that in mind, where certainly right, you may have to make hard decisions. And, and if it's eight hundred thousand dollars, that may well mean positions. Uh, but I think we need to keep in mind, one, two positions can have a profound impact on our children graduating. Boy, and if I could just emphasize that the one fifteen is in a way to accommodate our current level of staff. This is not one fifteen to make a savings or justify a cut in future. This is, you know, one fifteen because the car was currently having a hard time providing. I, yeah, I understand that. And my, my concern is that we presented a budget to ensure that we could maintain, maybe the hun, maybe keep us at one forty ELO moving forward, maybe not, but also to keep us from sliding backwards. And if we have to cut how many other teachers, then we're gonna slide backwards. You're gonna be in danger of not being able to fill, fulfill the four one fifteen. And I, that's where I'm coming from, you know, listening to you, how you presented it. And I think that's just absolutely irresponsible. It stinks that we have to pay this kind of money because the state is unwilling to, state's better government is unwilling to fund the mandates that they set forth that we have to adhere to, that you have to juggle your staff to fulfill. And then when we present a budget that makes it so, we are nearly crucified by doing that. So I wanna pay that extra money? No, I don't want it. I, I'd be using for, I could pay off like kids' college loans, you know? But that's why I have, you know, I'm, you know, I, I, I'm just like, I'm talking now for the record. Anyway, you know, so that's why when I, I'm looking at the one fifteen going, no, we shouldn't even be going there. We should be staying where we were, and it's, you know, keeping that bar high. All right.
Is there any easily accessible, I'm looking at you, Dan, as a trainer, um, any way could, like, that's easily accessible for us to find out, um, other high schools in the state, what their requirements are? I mean, in addition to having twenty credits more than what's required for the state, additionally, you have this number of performance projects that we require our students to have that is one of the state requirements. But we require that of our students. I mean, it does, I mean, have the student not graduated because they didn't complete their project? I mean, it says that if the requirement, but what happens if it, like, do we seriously hold a graduation certificate of diploma if someone doesn't complete their project?
They would have access to their diploma and transcript if they met the credit requirements. They would not participate in the graduation ceremony, to my knowledge. If I've been here, that has not happened, and I don't think it has.
I have observed that. And my understanding of the requirement is, I don't think the bar is here. They need to show effort to get there, but I don't think we're talking about, we've had students during the bar.
Graduating completely finished product, and several of those components, like the community service or things that have resume or post-grad plan, they do that, and we're leading up to, or they participate at that graduation. But we have not been held that privilege since then.
So then what's talking in here does not reflect what we do, if we're not, if, if the penalty is you don't get to walk, that's what should be reflected here. Otherwise, parents, certainly me as a community member, think that we're holding kids back from obtaining their diploma because that's not how that reads, says the graduation requirement, says the graduation like to have. There's some kids that don't care if they walk. You know, like, it's not, that may not be a big push. Like, yes, we would like to encourage kids, but again, it's the way it reads, is that we're requiring it. So if that's, if we are requiring it, then it's above and beyond the academic credit. So we wouldn't just be doing the minimum.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
So, it was their component of that, whether it be the community service, post-graduation plan, students may say that, you know, is it beneficial to a student?
I think it depends on, um, each individual student. I don't think you can, you know, you need to consider individual needs, which I'm sure that you guys do. But the thing is, if we're talking about bare minimum, we're not doing the bare minimum if this is something that we're encouraging or requiring our students to do. That was really the whole point, and the, still, that's the kid's idea of us.
So in an effort to get to the bare minimum, you should do that.
That is not what I said at all, the student board's right now, that's not what I said.
I'm wondering if we can let Dan get through the changes in the program of studies. And I think it's good discussion, but it's only, it's, you know, that was brought, that thought was brought up by one person. And when we get to the budget review, that may not be the direction the board wants to go. So, I mean, you know, if we, if that's not the direction the board wants to take, then we don't need to spend time.
I think currently, it's not, the board certainly doesn't even wanna go to a hundred. But it's concerned going to one fifteen, so let's move on and let Dan finish up. Okay.
All right, so after that, we have the addition of, um, Innovation Academy Language with essentially an overview of that program. Uh, and then continuing on, there is a description for each of those courses. Uh, you've seen a presentation on Innovation Academy. Uh, we've had some good press regarding Innovation Academy, whether that be from our consultant Mary Ma and our co-adjunctive, or we actually had, um, the winner of the Chris McCollum Sabatical Grant, who came and interviewed herself and a few students. And I suppose do that to her website as well. Uh, so I don't wanna leave at the point of restarting Innovation Academy, but that's all new language description for our staff.
And is that, will that be ready to roll for state school?
It's a will.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, new classes. Uh, we have a new class in English, Real Life English. There is a, a concerted push in the English department to move to a pathways model instead of what we currently have, which is essentially a gateway English tab, which is American way English tab, which is world wide among seniors, which is essentially elective. Uh, they can choose between the classes for their senior English class. Uh, Real Life English would be a first step forward in terms of moving to a pathways model, which is essentially articulating that if you have an interest in, let's say, journalism, these would be the English classes you would want to take to have a good foundation to pursue a major field. Uh, or, let's say, public relations, these would be the classes you would wanna take to have a good foundation, pursue major public relations. Uh, Carver High School, Whitey Mountain Regional High School, those are two schools that have, currently have a pathways model. And that's something that we're exploring. I have, um, asked the English department to be patient with me because I can't implement Innovation Academy into the schedule and the pathways model in the same year. That's, there are too many unknown variables to do that. So this is essentially just one step in that direction.
Just curious, um, seemingly that would have, there's a lot of variations there. Tons of subjects, so many can be put down. Isn't expecting that current staff, current staffing levels at least, would be able to handle all of those different topics?
Yeah, uh, not necessarily to the level of a bigger high school like Carver High School. Uh, but, yeah, we could, we could do that at our current levels. What it would really require from us is more flexibility in terms of, you know, not every freshman's going to come in and take gateway English. You know, it's going to be a little bit more next in terms of, uh, class rosters. And, uh, it's really something from an organizational standpoint of the department that being, you know, working on some great ones. In addition, some social studies and philosophy. Uh, and then, actually, Jean, this speaks to your point a little bit regarding, uh, reduction of the two point five credits for my side, their life studies. It actually allows us to, uh, offer some different electives. Because right now, we have many sections of wellness P P. And taking that out would allow that teacher to offer exercise education, or give physical education, or P E activities. or give physical education or PE activities. So, uh, in a way, I mean, I understand your point, but I think that this allows for some more targeted things that would be more valuable to students. So I hope that, uh, helps with that. And then lastly, we have yearbook design and production. Uh, that's a curriculum that's put together by Joe Sen, our partner, uh, our corporate partner that works with our yearbook advisor. Uh, and similarly to journalism class, that's been running around between year class and semester one. Changes to existing classes, nothing here is really earth shattering. Uh, there have just been tweaks to some prerequisites. Uh, so, you know, not for some course descriptions, but really nothing, nothing too monumental. Uh, one change I did want to share with you was with accounting one, uh, that the credits for accounting one, if a student did accounting one only, that would not fulfill the graduation requirement for technology. But there's so much more work within Excel in accounting two that's coming to a point. And so it's really just providing some language to clear up that, both for transparency with students and parents, but then also, um, in-house so that school counselors can apply that one. And that's it.
I'm just curious, so the first few classes here, have the NCAA looking at it, or is it one?
So the NCAA has, uh, there are certain classes, you know, for instance, um, many of our English classes that meet the NCAA requirements for student athletes. That they can basically impact eligibility or, you know, if the NCAA is partnered, and a student from us goes there, that they take in certain classes that would apply.
I have a question about honors biology. Back in my time in high school, there was honors and then there was AP. So would you maybe could educate me a little bit about that? And if there's an expectation of students to take a AP test or that's funded if a kid does an honors or AP class?
Yeah, so we do offer AP bio, and we have a dual enrollment bio. So our AP biology class, we're fortunate that we have a teacher that is qualified for both AP bio as well as, uh, teaching through Southern Hampshire University. Uh, he's actually an adjunct teacher there too. But, so each and one can currently open an AP bio class. And as soon as they pay a hundred dollars to Southern Hampshire and they get, um, you know, if they're three or better, they also earn free college credits from Southern Hampshire University. And that's that dual enrollment component. So we have that, uh, and then we have honors biology, uh, and, you know, bio and then our biology course. So essentially sophomores, uh, after they take energy depression, they all take the life science class, which is biology. Uh, and depending on, uh, you know, how they do an energy, uh, teacher recommendation that could support in our department whether or not they should be honors bio or AP bio is really something that they would take their, they're actually taking, uh, they have a foundation of what they honors bio, and then they would take AP bio, uh, their AP bio. Every student that takes their AP class is required to take the AP test. Because that, um, well, we have actually had a really lengthy discussion about this at our recent, uh, having a meeting leadership team. Because, uh, having that requirement, um, I think supports the idea that students are really dedicated to the curriculum because they do have to get through quite a bit. Uh, and it also replaces a formal final exam in class. So the fact that they take that, uh, it's obviously very detrimental to the college board. And that will replace them if they don't end up taking the final, the class.
Okay, the follow-up question, I mean, um, if, if students are required to take the AP test, I'm assuming that we're paying for that as a full district? We are not?
We are not.
Why would we not do that if it's a requirement of the class? That's the concern that I have.
There are other classes in which, uh, I wrote food, for instance, where supply from class is funded by the parent. So this is not a isolated example of not about top funding.
Okay, that ties into my second question. And we do have families who may not be able to afford those fees. If you encounter those families and you know about it, would you please bring it to us? Or have you wired to us in the past? I would hate for a couple hundred dollars to prevent a kid from getting dual credit or taking an AP exam.
We, we have students that will come to us without our parents and we pay for them to take that.
Okay.
And we actually, the college board actually does help with that to a certain extent, where, um, they designate someone in the school to be able to provide fee waivers or fee reductions. And so I keep that and go in and, you know, get the fee reduction where they, they're not giving us the credit, so it's good.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure for this requirement that we are providing free education.
Anything else you can add? Not further.
Thank you.
Do you need that to be, to be made?
Well, um, yes, preferably, except I have to get it to the project. Uh, and I need to do that prior to class and, uh, parent allocation.
Please report.
Motion to approve.
Second. Other questions, comments?
Um, should this were to take us to the topic of an alternative diploma? And this program is published, how would an addition be added to it?
I, so we obviously wouldn't be added to the printed version, but we have an online version that it's accessible to everyone. And there are things that I'll miss, uh, prior to, you know, uh, printing, and I'm going to fix those. Every department section has provision data, and then there is a provision data that I'll intervention at the beginning of it. So at some point, which like that would be added, that can very easily be added after approval and then exchanged provision.
Excellent, thank you.
That's it.
I'm not for a 115. So what can you tell me that would make me more, I think, be credit to the program?
You know, I, I struggle with it. And, uh, the reason for that is, I think, uh, 120 was a good threshold for us for a number of years. Uh, two years ago, we sustained, uh, three cuts for certified positions. Uh, one of those offered a number of collective credits. And, um, we were at 110, uh, when we had a different schedule. We phased into this 120, uh, because we didn't want to just jump when we changed the schedule. We didn't want to just jump to 120, we could be unfair to the senior status that had been operating with a 110, uh, you know, go live for a number of years. So we changed that to 120, and this is actually the first year, uh, that 120 has been a new, uh, graduation requirement. Because at this point, we've had our seniors that have been in the schedule now for three years. Uh, given the cuts we had and, uh, the challenges that we have seen, particularly this past month, um, with scheduling for the second semester and that drop, we have had a number of challenges with school counselors trying to pull together all the credits of students without doing a lot of VLOs that students may or may not have followed. So.
So are you suggesting that if we didn't have this great cut, it would have been easier for the students, the department members?
I think, I mean, the way that we went with those cuts, one of them I don't think would have been credit impactful for us, but I think it would have to put in. So, yes, answer your question, two out of those, I think it would have provided more opportunity for students to earn credit. The reason the other one is, I believe, we've had a piece that, uh, which is supportive of the population, but not necessarily providing course.
Thank you.
I have a question. Um, if we approved changes of the, of the 115 in credit, would you also be reducing the credit minimum?
Yes, uh, so it was thirty. Uh, as you remember, last year, uh, part of this presentation was the senior seminar, uh, which was supposed to be 2.5 credits and couldn't get that off the ground. Uh, and in conservative approach, we decided we were going to wait on that. Not having that in the schedule made it very difficult for us to get first credits for seniors. So we expect 27.5. Um, I would think that we would either maintain 27.5 or a cap or something that the national schedule looks like. Depending on the challenges we see in terms of scheduling. Either maintain 27.5 or go into 27.
What would be the? General philosophy around minimum, minimum credit? I guess my, just kind of going, if you got a junior that got ninety-five credits and always needs an extra twenty, why not just allow them to 20?
We have some students that have put together proposals that go through all for any high school experience. Uh, we have a student that did three and a half years, uh, last year. We have a student this year that got three. And, you know, that, that's, you know, requires a lot of effort on that student's part, including, you know, supplementing, uh, his schedule with, uh, other experiences whether he relaxes or starts. Um, I would say that we run into some issues with behavior, uh, some issues with, uh, commitment, uh, and frankly, responsibility. If you don't have some kind of threshold, these students, uh, they're sitting there at the minimum.
I would additionally say that there, it could be impactful on, um, international athletes athletic eligibility. And we have run into situations where students will start the year with a certain number of credits and perhaps drop a course or two, still maintain our minimum requirement, but it puts in jeopardy their athletic eligibility. And we want to make sure that we are being very transparent to any NCAA. And so some self-reporting has gone on, and we even question whether or not that's the case.
And I would understand the, the athletic piece, and that is the responsibility of students to maintain that. But I, I just question the, the line of thinking of the requirement of students to be there that don't necessarily have to be there.
Just clarifying question, it sounds like if, if there is a dedicated overachieving driver for a student, they do have a pathway to appeal and say, I can get this done sooner. That's not realistic.
We just ask that they formalize that with their school counselor and their faculty.
I mean, could be an activity, you know, for the student, what is, what's the minimum requirement for freshman and sophomore students for, which if they're looking at nine, starts right off the bat, they could do twenty-five and be done, assuming they haven't taken anything extra. So we, in reality, in reality, 115 is not achievable anymore. Because they couldn't do it by themselves. Got thirty, 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 that's ninety, we're talking another twenty-seven and a half. We're looking at one seventeen and a half, just to be a minimum requirement. But they can't graduate at 115. Well, they can't if they're a class, I guess, but they've got to take it to one seventeen and a half. So they're done. I don't know if that's, you're applying to 115, I don't see why they have to take that one seventeen and a half.
And that's not transparent.
It is.
Was paying 115, I can't do it with 115.
Well, you can graduate at 115, assuming you fail a two and a half credit class, you could still graduate. But in reality, you have to take one seventeen and a half out of minimum. I mean, that's probably not reasonable, you're like, that is higher than that.
You know, another thing I'd always look at, maybe the treatment requirement is thirty, that's 27.5 or, um, definitely 27.5.
Um, I pulled out, um, the, I can probably give you the exact number, but in, um, the ED, I pulled up a table that shows required programming areas and courses for graduation. It's actually listed by courses, not credits. Um, we're talking about credits. And just so we can kind of gauge apples to apples, um, there's certain classes that need so many courses. And it's hard for me to judge based on kind of what's here. Are these credits compatible? Does it make sense?
Uh, if it's, well, if what you're referencing.
Table three of six.
Yeah, so that may have, uh, like a state minimum requirement of twenty. Is that accurate on that?
We're not doing it.
Okay, so, uh, with Carnegie unit typically, right, okay.
Okay.
So Carnegie unit typically, it's for a full year class, thank you, is one credit. Pepper Academy and, and Lisa T, I don't, I don't know. Um, and every year, a full year class is five credit. So it's just, you know, like, community members said that it's, uh, we were covered for graduation, twenty-four Carnegie units, and Pepper Academy, Marlins, that's a hundred and twenty.
Sergeant.
Um, I understand that may have been the way it's traditionally held. And I'm just curious why there hasn't been alignment to the language that's actually in the, like, the, I don't know what this is, the ED, the major standards for public schools. I mean, that, why are we having it conform to the language that, the state's language?
I, I frankly don't have a good answer for that. I would just say they have an access to do that. And, uh, you know, in the past few years, with change in our grading paradigm to include our student information system, which, you know, generated some transitional issues in themselves, and having that change, I think would have helped.
So it's quite possible that if we go to a hundred and fifteen credits, or even if we were at 120, we could still be meeting the state requirements for courses?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if you look at that and you look at what's in there, I think you find they marry up pretty close. They have lots of years.
Can I maybe just explain that again? A Carnegie unit is equal to?
So a Carnegie unit is one credit according to the state, Pepper Academy is five. So essentially, uh, 120 would be twenty-four Carnegie units. Uh, 115 would be twenty-three, like state minimum is twenty.
Okay, so even though we would be, it's proposed that we drop one Carnegie unit at this time, we're still three credits above the minimum.
That's correct.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Any other questions? Would you like a motion to approve on it?
Can I get a second?
I think it's the second.
Okay.
Move questions, move, okay. All are fair.
Bye.
All closed. Close this one. We need to be high in direction.
If we cannot meet the requirements in collaboration with our current staffing level, are we looking to find, to get a decision tonight since we could leave the printer?
Um, I'm just wondering, is that the driving force?
I don't think we need a decision tonight.
Okay.
They, they disagree, but I don't think the board can be pressured into a decision just because of a printer.
Agreed.
At our current staffing level, this year is a hundred and twenty. And if we remain at a hundred and twenty next year at the current staffing level, are, uh, is it doable? I mean, the variable is that, you know, it is a student's own family. Right? When they fail something, it becomes very difficult.
But don't we have recovery programs to, to alleviate that? I mean, at one point, are we supposed to, for lack of a better term, dumb down our expectations because students fail? There are options to students who, who fail. And if students I mean, at one point, are we supposed to, for lack of a better term, dumb down our expectations because students fail? There are options to students who can, who fail, and if students don't take advantage of those options, they don't take advantage of those options, they don't graduate, and that's really a shame. But it's no reason to lower the number of credits for graduation.
You know, electronic means, I mean, there is D Lacs, I know math, frankly, I know that's where you're struggling. Math is a little bit difficult on D Lacs. But they don't have to necessarily take algebra two minimum requirements, they can take consumer math, I don't know what's out there. They're, they're with me, they can take something that's not quite as rigorous as D Lacs, and still qualify for graduation.
Thank you.
Um, what time of year is credit recovery available to students?
Uh, credit recovery is available after the class. Uh, and there is a threshold for credit recovery because if, for example, the student doesn't do really anything during the course of the year, then that course can't be recreated at the time for credit recovery. So I believe it is that they cannot fail more than two confidence is, and they can't get lower than one point five for the holistic grades in the class. So if they get a point five and they fail to reconfidence, they credit recovery is not a option. But if they are eligible for credit recovery, they would definitely do that after the class. If it's semester one class, they would be able to take a part in semester two, if it's a semester two or a four-year class, then that would be, you know, perhaps the right time.
The other component to this that I, I think we're failing to address yet, but there's been a number thrown around very publicly about where the discrepancy lies between the supported budget we've put forward, and that which the N B C recommends. If we were to have to move in that direction as a school district, we would be very hard pressed to provide this level of education with current staffing, hence a diminished level of staffing by one or two positions if that were what we were looking at. And to get to that kind of a number that's been thrown out there, we're talking about human capital, and it would be, we would not be operating against current staffing.
It would make it difficult to do the one fifteen.
Potentially.
So, again, you come to lowering the bar based on money at the detriment of the students.
I, I don't think that's a bridge we put, I don't think that's a bridge you guys should be crossing at the moment.
No.
If, if it comes back that the budget we've been covering is supported, that's an issue that this board is going to have to deal with. I don't think that's something you guys should get into considerations or building this today.
So, is, is the opposition only with this number of credits that they have, when people move in because of the rest of the credits? For me, it was...
For me, it was.
Yeah, it's just, again, the lowering...
Lowering the bar.
Standard, and it constantly seems like every time, not every time, but throughout, not just here, everywhere, we're lowering the bar and making it more attainable without the hard work, and that's why I have my problem.
Okay.
Um, just to make the point that the state has decided what is an appropriate education? So it's not that we're necessarily dumbing it down, if we're still providing our students with what the state defines as appropriate, that appropriate is not necessarily minimum.
But the, one of the reasons that the town is doing as well economically as it is, the housing market, you know, people and families want to move into this town, is because we have standards. We've put a lot of energy and effort into providing a quality education to the students who come around, and that is why this town has really done extremely well the last ten, fifteen years.
Uh, I just wanted to note that, uh, what was in favor of the one fifteen, and I share teams, I think the rest, some of it that are not for lowering requirements. Reason that voted yes was, I think, the scores, the expert in the matter is addressing this, that the staff that he has available, but if there is a way that we can avoid any staff cuts and keep it at one twenty, that may certainly be a good reference. I just wanted to clarify why, whatever the night did, if we don't have the staff to do one twenty responsibly, we shouldn't try to do one twenty, but I hope they will.
So is this something that, will you be looking for us to just keep it at one twenty for the evening? And go over with that, and then revisit it? I'm just wondering, because we have to give, we have to give presentations, we have to, like, kick in the classes for next year, so I don't want to hold up the whole process if we want to keep it at one twenty. That's something you could always revisit, you know, just because of the print, like we discussed, and maybe you can't revisit the, the credit requirement, is that true?
Yeah, yeah, it's, I mean, it, to me, the course descriptions, the language changes, those are, in the grand scheme, things pretty minor.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I'm presenting this to you from a practical standpoint, philosophically, I frankly pardon that because, uh, shut down, because I agree with that philosophically, but from a practical standpoint, that's where it's...
If it's one twenty, as far as I'm concerned, stays one twenty, the board just turns it down to one fifteen.
Yeah, right.
But I just want to clarify, because the rest of it, I, that's why I asked.
Do you want to, do you want a motion to, would you like another motion that directs it to one twenty?
Or you can just make a motion to change it back to one twenty and everything else is, okay, just really like that?
Before we go there, can I, can I, just a second. So we're at, we're at one fifteen.
This means paper, this is, not at one fifteen, okay.
This means the paper, it's at one fifteen. It may cut to life studies and elective extended learning. Would it make sense to add five credits back into the elective line, leave the life study line the way it is? That way there, you have a little bit more flexibility, you have to wish staff is, is providing those extra five credits.
No, clever.
Thank you.
Good for one of that, so I'm done with it. Is that acceptable to you?
That would be great.
Can I make a motion maybe to... We revert back to the one twenty.
So electives will be five credits from the other side.
Right.
In your elective...
And the elective one.
We'll leave the life studies to seven and a half.
Right, to maintain the one twenty seven.
Maintain the one twenty.
And then approve the rest of the language changes that is proposed.
That'd be great.
Any other questions or comments?
Can I say that again?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
What's your favorite work ethic? You're welcome, I think. All right. I'm going to skip the budget review for now, so if you need to, I can, I can table out. Yeah, thanks for sticking with us this long, sorry if that's okay with everybody.
I'm ready to walk with him, but... I sent him a box to the corner in the morning.
Glad you stayed with us for this long.
So today and last week as well, we had our usual winter fun and more committee meeting, which is where we get the bulk of our work done. I'm personally co-chairing gym days, which is a big part of the physical winter fun and celebration. So we've worked on the engagement schedule with all of us, and ready to go forward with the winter festival planning. Last week, we ended up with DJ, which is a big part in winter fun and sports, which is almost every time. And we then worked this week on talent show auditions that we're going to be having. I believe we had one today, and then as the auditions, whenever we can get gym time, and that got canceled, we'll have to start to do the talk for that. Last week, we had a few students who designed some T-shirts for our club, they designed it themselves, and they set that up to be ordered. So we'll all head back to it for, I believe, the Thursday of the carnival, like we do every year, so that. This coming Friday, we're going to be having a sport jersey spirit day. I know I talked to you like before about spirit days, so that's going to be our theme for this, uh, this Friday. And then we also talked about potentially hosting a district meeting, which we have done in the past, and different student councils and student summit alike around the area. I'll come over, we can present today and sort of team up building activities, we can go out and get, do some interest activities, always get involved, give it out to the school, and we look at the festivals in that we've had in the past. So that's pretty much what we've been doing at the center, if you have any questions, all the time, we should be answering.
Steve, for, for, give it to me last time.
Superheroes, superheroes.
You already know it, oh, my dear, right.
Yeah, we, we...
Thank you for, uh, still reading.
Question?
Yeah, sorry, question, go ahead.
Sure. Um, mine would be, um, the leadership, regional meeting that we're considering, when would that be?
So I'm not sure, I know the last time we did it, I was a freshman, we didn't do it last year. And I thought about it was in the winter, February, early March, so I don't know if maybe that date could push back a little bit? Maybe in April, early May, I'm not sure on the date, so...
So you're thinking of doing it this year?
I think so, we, we talked about the potential.
Ambition.
Any other questions? For your, for your three to go. Is that more?
Uh, brief, how do you, um, the big issue with the calendar? Um, there was a, an update on the Medicare funding, which was a problem. And other than a record passage of a number of policies that is pretty much, is a good meeting, are February meetings...
Questions for Pat? Yeah, what did you mean, what do you think, reporting, we don't already know? Well, we might get to go back to budget, you can...
No, um, but the committee has backed up, um, unfortunately, not good to do the conversation after the public hearing the other night. I'm sure that was oversight, but they convened...
So they reaffirmed their decision.
They did reaffirm their decision, no one there, I was not the one that were going to convene. Um, I emailed them to express my trust in them with that, and got a nice response from Mr. Flurry. But they did reaffirm their position, um, and so as far as I'm concerned, they are wrapped for the year.
Any questions? Porters by, by the end.
Part of why I signed it for the...
Any questions, Brad? Okay, all right, uh, pace, did it taste like that?
Uh, well, it was tonight, so...
Is that common?
I...
Oh, Monday, yes, yes, sorry.
Oh, we changed Monday, yeah, that's right, okay. So that can be reported, is it?
No. I have a question.
Oh, we're going to...
Uh, just the, you could email me something like that.
Um, so renovation, you have anything? Well, we already heard, okay.
Before we go to the next part, there's two things that I was also for that are not on here, can I just...
Oh, yeah, correct.
The first thing is that the A R E A meeting for this month is also canceled, we will not be meeting. And the other thing is that I did attend the New England Student Board Association delegate meeting last month, and there was a very informative presentation about legal best practices, so I brought you all back a little booklet. And there is a section in here regarding the school boards, so it's just interesting to take a look at. There's also, um, a website for the New England Secondary School Consortium that has information, anything we can download from there, we can use at no cost, which is great. Um, probably one of the biggest takeaways for me, by the way, wherever there, we did talk about the gun warrant that was proposed, and it did pass that recommendation to limit guns in schools. However, Barrett Christina said that until it is passed for three years in a row, and because we believe that's not something they would actively, um, right, lobby. One of the bigger takeaways was, one thing that we talked about in the presentation, is how many people have not only business meetings, but opportunities for continuing education during their board meetings. And I was pretty impressed by how many other boards have that, they have people come into, so they're educational opportunities, at board meetings for boards and also the community, so that was pretty cool. One person raised her hand, said they were from Allen County, so maybe that, you know, if they're currently doing that, and they're in our N S U, we should, I don't know. I know that would be helpful to me at the new school board, and sort of get education. I'm not sure what that means. They have presentations at a school board meeting that are from educational...
Okay, okay.
Yeah, on, on, that's...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a...
Sit down, yeah, thank you.
So, I mean, Casey has started volunteering at Hill two days, and she's had a good amount of time with us, so that's exciting. She's fantastic. The range actually is right before Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving, all of that, right before, um, winter break, Thanksgiving, our third grade Earth's dictionary. Um, instead of read across America, we're doing read across the world, and the competition for reading the most minutes is between the grade levels and faculty. Of course, that's to you, so take it. Um, and then we're also during the month of February, collecting canned box food, canned and boxed foods to donate to the community action agency. Um, and then the last thing is that, um, we were hoping, hopefully, that with, um, the option of, or the opportunity fellow high school to have a voice, that essentially a fourth grade class, somebody in the room, could come and present their penguin, um, presentation to the board, either a student or a class, and, um, right, you said we've got that opportunity, so I wanted to put that in front of you guys.
Questions for you?
I want to hear about penguins.
I want to hear about penguins. You want to hear about penguins?
We present with the fur of the agenda.
You have to make it a little longer. Do you want, I, I was cheating for that, this question, you want to have the meeting at Hill?
Uh, we can catch back if I have the camera.
I don't know if we can get backlash from the camera, I'm required to have the camera, I...
The time, you know, several times I didn't hear any, there was nobody complaining.
I, I think if the board feels supported, he goes another day, and I don't see issue with that.
It would be more exciting with the kids, having them come here to the high school, all dressed to be...
Good point, would you like?
I can ask, though.
Would they be more comfortable there?
Would it be appropriate to put T R S with the way they're serving there, or anything?
Well, I think one of the things about doing it at the Hill School is, one, I wouldn't have to take all the things out of the house. But two, kids might be excited to have it available online.
Oh, here, okay.
So, the decision is...
Do you want to check with the kids and find out where they would like to do it, and if the board, I know that you're not, but the majority of the board, okay, we will need to, Hill?
Um, smart junkie, after the...
Maybe, but I can't shoot penguins.
Well, I think I can.
You can.
We can still know.
For count. Definitely put it beginning, you tend to know, because I should say...
I mean, yes, the third, the third is your next meeting, but you also have the meeting that Saturday, so about to meet in the time.
How long do you think it's gonna be?
Ten minutes? Tie it on the front of that.
I think.
We should tie it on the front of that.
My third?
Yeah.
Well, we'll put it right up.
Yeah, just for discussion's sake, if we were to move to a different building without a recording before some meeting, the, the vote from the terrace, and the meeting's 4:07, you may be under scrutiny.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Just more...
But we still need to find out from Mr. Lee, Mr. Lee, what the students prefer.
If they prefer to come here, I'm okay with that. I'm not, I don't know my heart set on.
So, we just need to check the agenda a week before to find out where we're gonna be.
Yeah, you'll, you'll have an answer pretty quick, and we can get that.
Okay, thank you.
What about you, John?
Well, in between all the delays and cancellations, there's been, uh, someone who didn't have our fifth and sixth grade concert here at P A. Um, one, people there were playing at our house, but kids involved, which is awesome. Uh, we are continuing, I don't know, bringing it up on the S N H U and, uh, at our building, we tried to, we're doing something with a fifth this year. They go out twice during the course of the day, and we also put in a flex schedule so that their students can, uh, basically go to any classroom and, and, or focus really on this classroom day. Um, so, that's been, that's been pretty positive. Um, and at least S N H U wants to come and see the things, some of the things that's going on in our school. Uh, we kind of go to the further department, you know, so we still gotta start all that up. Uh, we had a kind of a fun thing going on in science class, in sixth grade science, uh, he and Wes is doing a whole thing on energy. And kids took energy readings who have the whole building, um, and a big map up where, uh, of the building and all the different places in the building where it's either hot or cold or whatever. And when they are built, they've built, uh, small little box houses, uh, with insulation and experimenting to see how much insulation, what type of insulation, all that stuff. Um, we're also doing, uh, penny wars, penny patience. Um, if you haven't heard of that, it's, uh, these are done by grade level. And you earn points, you get pennies, but you get points taken away from you if someone gets sober or, or sick. And so, kids bring in money and they, uh, the idea is to put larger donations into your voting. Uh, this is pretty popular. We're up over two hundred dollars right now.
That's actually fun.
Yeah, yeah. It's pretty funny to watch. Definitely has to be, depending on that, uh, because of the cancer.
Questions, John? Good?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Um, I would like more information about SNU's intent to videotape. Where would they be videotaping? And I had looked like according to New Jersey law, that videotaping is restricted without the board's permission in classroom.
This is, this is something that, that SNU has done on a regular basis, as far as videotaping student teachers and stuff like that. So, this would be, um, if any kid was going to be videotaped, it would be with the board's permission. And we usually do it in, on select, select, uh, areas.
Okay. So, is it in classrooms now? Will they be?
Potentially, could be. We're still, like I said, we're still, we're still, there's some, uh, actual, we haven't even talked to the staff about it yet.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're compliant with New Jersey law, which is important in classroom. Thank you.
Paul, good question.
All right, I know you're looking on, I think, but, um, in addition to what my Americans would, the buildup towards winter carnival, one of the things that our staff and students do annually is cut their costs. That's one of the main activities where, um, you know, several, the students, male or female, they blow their hair out over the course of the year, and they have a trail. Get to gym and, uh, and taking part many times.
Never went there.
And, uh, the donations, of course, go towards the implementation of ways for, uh, physicians who are treating cancer themselves. Uh, it's a good cause, it's, uh, celebrated around the school, is something that a lot of students and faculty would prioritize. Uh, but everything right now is, all systems go towards winter carnival and then, uh, February.
Questions, Paul? Okay, let me focus here. All right. I'm gonna go back up to F Y twenty twenty-one budget. We have some stuff to do in non-public. Yeah, why don't, can we, we've got some work to do in non-public related to budget. When we come out of non-public, is there other items that don't need to be discussed in non-public that people like to discuss for your debt? Do you agree with that? Who's not your public?
Yeah, that's not ready. I just want information.
Go ahead.
So, I would like to address Josh. There's a branding certification, um, and Josh is now a certified school facility specialist.
Yay!
Is there a format for that certification? Probably.
I had to take, uh, seven classes online, uh, at least half the class, we move on to the next one.
Did you sign to your door?
Done. Trying to log, we're not keeping that. I do have to meet, you know, to keep up with it, you have to do so many hours to do an education over a month or three years.
Congratulations, good for you.
Thank you.
Sit down.
That was it.
How was it?
That was enough.
Go ahead.
Um, in informational sense, the time period has closed for, um, candidates to apply to the school board. Could we hear from the running for school board?
Do we have a poll?
You have a poll that's downloaded.
Okay, thank you.
If not, we'll, we'll, we'll post it.
Can you raise your hand?
I don't like that.
Is it okay if we email that up?
Um, just to turn it, to make it happen for public consumption, so it can be available to public, because it makes it more. I didn't see it posted.
But should be done by our clerk, Cindy Minar. You can contact her and ask her to post that somewhere.
Does she need to post it on?
She has not been very responsive to the board in the past, but you are welcome to contact her.
But she does not have accurately posted on our website?
I have the list, if you want.
Oh, that'd be great.
Excellent.
Melanie Camello, Pat O'Shea, Anne Bond, Clint Hanson, Terry Bean, Amy Menzeli, and Lisa Raffo Mader.
Wow.
Could you read it one more time?
Melanie Camello, thank you, Pat O'Shea, Anne Bond, Clint Hanson, Terry Bean, Amy Menzeli, Lisa Raffo Mader.
Thank you.
R B C P A dash M A N N I O N.
That's great. Something you can know?
I think so. I've been on before, I can never remember a field that large.
That's, that's good, good if you called you, uh, interesting, fantastic.
Seven people, but I can't.
Okay, six, seven? Okay.
I have one more.
Go ahead.
Um, Carolyn Gersh, which, as you all know, is made out of different, different materials.
Yep.
Stentinansure, and she, um, sent us, sent you part, um, that we love, that we just sent to you.
Okay.
And the winner is? Uh, it'd be acceptable to me.
Oh, okay. Okay, we'll pass.
Come on, yeah. You probably don't, um, I'll tell everybody, you could cut down the camera and then just try to read it.
Um, public comments. Any members of public or companies who still left?
I will go, I will go really quickly, I've grown the.
No problem.
Um, there has been, well, two things. First thing, I know you guys are talking about going on to social media sites. Um, personally, I was just highly against that. I understand you want to post meetings, that kind of thing, so if you're gonna do that, I would highly recommend not having it be comments available. That may go against what the public wants, but I have to be honest, speaking from personal experience over the last twenty-four hours, people get ugly, people get mean, and they're gonna only get more ugly and more mean if the, if the school board has a Facebook page that people can comment.
That was the intention. When we first brought that up seven, eight months ago, that was the intention, no comments.
And like, I have a thick skin, but it's getting a little out of hand. But anyways. Um, the second thing is there's been many, 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 many questions about line items for the budget, but if there could be some clear answer to one line item that seems to keep coming up, and it doesn't have to be right now, but it, I mean, sometime in the near future. Those fish tanks, three D printers line items, if that, there could be some explanation. I know Innovation Academy is in there. Just what those printers are gonna be used for, what's the fish tank's going to be used for? I know where it's going to be used for, but what, what program that's going to be associated with, what school is gonna be associated with? Just because that seems to, for some reason, to me, it will really be hot topic. So, that's all, thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll pull it out.
Thank you.
Would you like the information this?
I would love the information.
If you could provide your email address, we will provide you with the information.
Just remind me, yes.
Okay. Anything else?
I just have a quick one.
Go ahead.
Then I need to see. Um, I think I pretty much answered it for a lot of people who are asking, but if there's some kind of certification that teacher contract is a complete separate law article.
Right.
And there's a misconception when a lot of people in town have been billed into the school budget. So, I think there was a couple people that solved that by pulling the documents down and feeding it, but that is a misconception. That it was billed into the school budget proposal. And then the only other thing I have going forward, and you guys have enough on your plate right now, for the future, even our presidential candidates are doing it, all of our local advocacy groups are doing it, as we build these policies and procedures. If there was a way to start changing the word of disability to different abilities, our children can do whatever they want with the support in place. And even people running for the presidency have changed their non-disability into the difference of ability. And I love it, and going forward, it's actually in our language, in our home.
Great, thanks very much. Board has been doing a non-public session, we have R S A ninety-one dash A, colon, three, semicolon, two, excuse me?
Yes.
Hey, are we all public?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.